Good afternoon, this it's two forty-five. The third of September twenty twenty-five and I call to order the study session for the Durango City Council. Could we get roll call?
Mayor Protem Woodruff.
Here.
Councilor. Mary Yasi.
Here.
Councilor Coso.
Here.
And Councilor Gonzalez.
President.
Uh, reading of the Indigenous Land Acknowledgements.
This is a call to honor and respect Indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As residents and visitors of Durango, we are called upon to educate ourselves about the history and cultural heritage of the land we inhabit. The city of Durango is situated on the ancestral homelands and territories of the N'utu, Ute, Hickaria Apache, Apache, Pueblos of New Mexico, Hopi-Sinom, Hopi, and Dene-Navajo nations. The original stewards of this land were forcibly removed and exposed to countless atrocities by the United States government, including repeatedly broken treaties, forced assimilation, the tragic legacy of Indian boarding schools, and the loss of ancestral homelands. We recognize lasting generational trauma exists within native communities today. We affirm the continuing importance of ancestral sites to descendant communities as integral to the living cultural landscape. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountable relationships and informed actions. May this serve as a step toward inclusion and reconciliation.
The next item on the agenda is the Lodger's Tax Council Determination Proposal Presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Maybe that just a little closer. So this item does uh is in line with our mission, vision, and value statement as we do strive to provide outstanding customer experiences for the community. Um, and this item really, it's exciting because it's the first um of the presentations for the budget process for twenty twenty-six and these projects. So this is broken up into a few different um areas. First, we'll go over process review and then proposal presentations from the various departments and then, of course, questions, any questions that you may have. So just getting into a little bit of the process, um, the departments um will present uh their proposals before you tonight. Um, and then um you will have the the information to rank these projects. Um, I believe Jose has or will send out a form. It's a very simple form just to rank these projects. Um, and then we will discuss these again when we meet back on uh October thirteenth at the Budget Retreat. Um, so this uh will review the ranking along with um the funding capacities for further discussion with you at that time. So we'll go ahead and get started with the proposals and get right into the projects.
Sarah, could I just have a moment? Council, could we have questions after each of the Lodger's Tax Presentations? Could I ask for a motion that we just asked those going back three or four presentations seems to get a little difficult?
Let's continue with the presentations and you can have the questions and we'll just have to keep notes. But I understand um the fact that you'd like to have immediate answers, but it's better for the team to go ahead and do all their presentations because this is what they practiced. Okay, thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Council. I am Sarah Hill, the Transportation Director, and I am pleased to present a few options for your funding consideration. Um, none of these should be unfamiliar. These were all funded through your council determination in twenty twenty-five, and we are bringing them back to you since they've been very successful and benefiting um locals who work directly for the tourism industry or who are directly impacted by it. Um, so first up, we're requesting forty-one thousand to subsidize the cost of the very successful downtown employee parking program. Uh, again, the purpose of this program is to provide affordable and convenient parking for employees in the central business district. The program also alleviates um high-demand parking or alleviates stress on high-demand parking in the central business district as well as in neighborhoods adjacent to downtown such as East Third Avenue. So this program opens all city parking lots as well as ninety-one metered spaces within the downtown area to employees. This allows employees to have convenient parking within a couple blocks of their business. So we did roll it out in May of this year. It has been very well received. We currently have eighty uh different businesses participating, and in the first three months, we sold over a thousand permits. We reached out to businesses to see if they would participate again in the program if it if it's funded in twenty twenty-six, and we received a resounding yes, please. Uh, the funding request covers the cost of the lost meter revenue at those ninety-one metered spaces um and also subsidize the cost of the permits to keep the program affordable for employees and business owners. Um, next up, uh, council has funded the Free Fair Summer for the last uh two years through this determination amount. The ninety-eight thousand dollar request reimburses the fare box revenue that's lost to the Transportation Fund. So this program is directly responsible for increasing transit ridership, and it removes barriers to accessible and convenient transit options. We see an average of about a twenty percent increase in ridership during times when the fare is free versus when we're charging fare. And true to public transit, it doesn't discriminate between locals and visitors. Uh, the benefits are equal for everyone. A lot of the ridership increase is from visitors who ride the Main Avenue Trolley or our evening micro-transit service. But then again, seventy-six percent of our ridership is transit-dependent, meaning they don't have another way uh to make essential trips around Durango like work commutes. And uh, the main occupation of our ridership is hospitality industry, um, which has a direct alignment with these tourism dollars. So free transit is an amazing way to support our transit-dependent tourism workforce, and it's a great uh introduction to visitors who are visiting our community. Um, also, free transit impacts traffic congestion during our busiest tourism months, and it provides safe rides for both locals and visitors. And then finally, from the Transportation Department, our last request would fund free transit service for annual community events. We're requesting sixteen thousand to cover the operating cost of that service. We do get dozens of requests every year to offer your free shuttle service or free transit to events. Uh, this is outside of our annual operating budget, so we can't offer the option for free and maintain a balanced budget. Through council's determination funding in twenty twenty-five, we have provided around fifteen hundred rides so far on special event shuttles, and that's to events like Snow Down, San Juan Brew Fest, Earth Day, Farmer's Market Senior Hour, Animus River Days, Fourth of July Parade. And then looking forward to the end of the year, um, we're still scheduled to serve the Cowboy Gathering, the West Slope Startup Week, um, a public event at Mano Soup Kitchen, and then we have the flexibility to offer that service to any other events that come up. And that is all from the Transportation Department.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Bryce. Hello, Council. Excuse me. My name is Jacob Dunlop. I'm a commander at the Police Department. I believe I met most of you, but for those I haven't. Um, I'm here to advocate for the continued purchase of Meridian barriers that offer uh safety and protection for enclosed event spaces that the city is hosting. All right, okay, sorry, it just disappeared. In twenty twenty-five, uh, city staff anticipates hosting at least fifteen special events on city right of ways with crowd sizes ranging from fifteen hundred to over seventy-five hundred people at these events. Uh, when the city approves a special event using our right-of-way, the city becomes responsible for ensuring the safety of those within the event area, and this really is a collaboration. Uh, Ellen Babers and I have worked very closely with kind of putting this together, and council's actually been generous enough to use Lodger's tax funds to continue expanding um these protective barriers to include a pushing of safety for the events. Uh, so I really do want to acknowledge that this is just as much a Parks and Rec special events ask as it is a public safety providing uh safety for the community, but um the expected outcomes are just uh expanding the current availability of safety equipment to ensure the safety of our community and our visitors as they're enjoying these special events. Uh, so I I'm sure you've seen stuff off and on over the last couple of years about vehicle incursions into enclosed spaces, and these barriers offer a level of protection for the community for that. Uh, and what's what I actually just learned about a couple of weeks ago is that if we set these barriers up in a certified way according to the manufacturers, it actually allows for access to some federal reimbursement funding if we were to have an incident uh where a vehicle actually does try to enter into the enclosed space. So uh, some of the benefits are aside from just making the community feel safer at these events that we are taking proactive efforts to protect them, not just from intentional incursions. But again, I'm sure you guys have seen there's a lot of unintentional incursions where drivers are just not paying attention. They're intoxicated, elderly, whatever the reason is, they just try driving down a road that they're used to driving on uh and don't see that it's all shut down. So um, providing the extra safety, allowing for some of the additional reimbursement-type funding if something were to happen are all positive outcomes from this. Obviously, it has a tourism alignment 'cause I mean, you think about, and I know I'm gonna leave some out because we have so many great events, but Snow Down, we just had Brew Fest, the farmer's market that we're going now. All of these uh great events bring in people from out of town, and therefore, uh, I think this easily ties back into their safety. And then the impacts of inaction are just, we continue having to um try to call together uh other areas or other ways to protect areas where we don't have enough barriers. So in years past, we've used dump trucks, we've used city buses. Um, those work, but they also obstruct views. They provide additional barriers um that this is better to do it right. So for all that, we are asking for the um the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars will get us more barriers, another trailer, uh, some training that again, certified training means we'll set them up in a certified manner, and that opens up the access to the federal funding should the worst case happen and they actually get used. So, any questions?
Big questions at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
Okay, next is City Manager's Office. Sorry, next is City Manager's Office.
Mayor and Council, I'm gonna ask uh Sarah Tobar to uh help come up and help you with this item. Uh, as y'all are aware, the uh La Plata Economic Development Alliance and the Early Childhood Council of La Plata County uh have placed together a strategy in regards to helping address the childcare needs that we have in our area. Uh, they are asking for the first annual investment of a three, first of three years of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars uh to assist in implementing their, make sure I get the part right, their childcare investments plans goals. So I'll pass it over to uh Sarah to talk a little bit of what are those options that will uh this money would fund.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you all for um considering this opportunity for childcare in La Plata County and here in the city of Durango. So we are looking specifically for, I've already presented to you all on the childcare investment plan itself. You've had some time with it, so hopefully if you had any questions, you let me and Heather know before this. Um, but we have um, you know, we have lined up a number of public, private, and philanthropic um donations around this investment fund to help match our public contributions. So we have four major philanthropic foundations right now that are interested in matching our public partners. So this is really critical. This first year of investment is really critical for setting us up for success as we look to make systemic changes in the ecosystem of childcare here. Um, as we have kind of gone over before in that plan, we are looking at a thirty-four million dollar uh loss in wages in La Plata County around um childcare, not having access to childcare. We've already seen those numbers gone up uh since our plan was released, and the Colorado numbers have gone up as well. So again, this is an issue that is not going to solve itself. Um, we also know that uh these funds will be critical to stabilize our current childcare centers that we have and build capacity at them. So everything from wages to again, uh, infrastructure at the childcare centers to bringing those barriers to entry down for childcare providers who want to start a childcare center. We're doing a lot of work around um identifying what areas can uh facilitate childcare centers as well for um zoning purposes to again, help these processes to go smoother and to help all of our public private partners be speaking to each other during these processes. It's what we've learned in in attainable housing at the Alliance as well. So we were very specific in some of these outcomes in this first year as we look to create three hundred new childcare slots in Durango. Uh, we do uh believe that we will be able to uh come back to you all after those investments are made in twenty twenty-six and after we're able to start deploying deploying funds around this. We do believe that we'll be able to update you all within six months and within a year and be able to demonstrate that trajectory of having stabilized some of this industry as we have forty-one percent turnover currently. So again, we're talking about wages and stipends. We're talking about a strategic investment navigator role. Um, this would be a critical role to help facilitate funding needs for our early childcare centers um as well as help to navigate some of the regulations uh that encumber childcare centers, not just at the city level, but also at the state um and uh with the county and with fire districts. For instance, we had a childcare uh provider who wanted to open a center here. Before they had even um really had a chance to open their doors or anything, they had over twelve thousand dollars in fees with the fire district, and um they were likely not going to be able to open that um center because it was never going to meet compliance. So we'd like to help businesses avoid those kind of pitfalls and help them to identify um places that childcare centers can actually be placed at. Uh, so this uh this early childcare, uh, this strategic investment navigator role will be um really important to that as well as the early childcare incubator program and then the development of a bilingual early childcare program. That's something that the Good Food Collective called for when they had their uh Latin X uh group meeting uh for two years and also had a plan related to that specifically. And so then we would also have the uh creation of a childcare coalition as well as a facility needs assessment and inventory. So um, again, these funds are really critical to matching our other funding sources that we have already uh had conversations with. It's also critical in uh getting our other public partners to participate on the various levels that they are able to, as well as our businesses uh to to be able to contribute in such a manner that is going to move the needle for our community. I think something important to remember in this um in this space is I know this is a newer concept. We're not able to follow any other city in Colorado because we are the first city considering this. Um, the state is looking at our investment plan, and they are watching us, and they're seeing if we can bring together public, private, and philanthropic partners around this to actually make systemic changes to childcare system. And as an industry, it's critical. It's the top two things I know you all hear about. It's housing and childcare. And um, if you look at, if you look at federal subsidies for gas and oil, there is twenty billion in subsidies, and nobody really talks about that. But if we were paying gas at the pump without those subsidies, that would be ten to fifteen dollars per gallon. So if you think, if if you think about it, like, these are, these are the kinds of things that our workers need. They need gas, they need a house, they need childcare, and we don't talk about the cost of gas and gas subsidies. This should be a no-brainer as well when it comes to our public-private partners helping to support um other solutions here.
Thank you, sir. Did we forget Mike? Uh, is he gonna present for uh?
Next one, yes. Mike's ready.
Good afternoon, Council Mayor. Uh, the following proposal is for a seasonal minimum revenue guarantee for a pilot program that would provide a direct line to and from Houston, the George Bush International Airport in the winter season of twenty-six and twenty-seven. The uh, the pilot program aligns with our strategic plan in the following way. One dot one ensures financial sustainability and innovation-led framework that thrives on building effective partnerships. Two dot two stimulate economic progress and resili- resiliency through strategic collaboration supporting business growth. Two dot three preserve and enhance Durango's distinct appeal and competitive edge as an attractive community by engaging in strategic infrastructure investments and partnerships between public and private sectors. And finally, four dot four, maintain an enhanced Durango status as the key regional hub for aviation services by delivering safe, efficient, and sustainable airport operations and promoting a competitive airline environment. The uh Minimum Revenue Guarantee Pilot is an extension of air travel that will create economic development and long-term tax revenue for the city. Will increase capacity and routes, and that's one of the efforts that we should consider as an investment as we make a run uh to the build of twenty thirty and do some community building there. Um, if awarded the the World Cup, you'll hear a little bit more about the campaign of twenty thirty, which is a little bit more about the campaign of twenty thirty, which is really to consider community building, investments of infrastructure that benefit the community long after the races are are said and done. Tony?
Good afternoon, Council. Tony Bakary, Aviation Director at the Durango La Plata County Airport. Just providing a little context here. Um for awareness, minimum revenue guarantee programs or MRGs are essentially a performance-based contract between a local entity and an airline. Um they're used typically for airlines to mitigate risk on new startup services where an airline might be otherwise hesitant to commit those resources um on that front. MRGs are commonly used throughout the nation to secure new routes. Um here in Colorado, we see numerous examples of that on the Western Slope, communities of Montrose, Grand Junction, Telluride, Gunnison, Eagle, Steamboat, all use some form of MRGs uh to support air service into their communities. Um we have not historically had significant MRG programs in Durango. There hasn't been any in the last fifteen-plus years that I'm aware of, certainly in a lot, not in the last ten since I've been here in Durango. Um the way these contracts work effectively is is as it sounds, it's a minimum revenue guarantee. So the contracting entity locally working with the airline commits through negotiations to a set level of guaranteed revenue for the airline. If ticket sales on the route exceed that overall revenue level, then no funds are expended and essentially returned to the balance to be used for additional purposes in the future. If revenue falls short of that agreed-upon balance, then a payment is made by the local entity to make up the difference, hence the request for this potential funding here. Um so if the the route has performed strongly, then there's potentially limited to no financial outlay. Uh if it performs less than expectations, then there is a potential financial outlay, um hence the need for the funding there. Um in, one other key thing to understand is that FAA regulations prohibit airport funds from being directly used for MRGs. Um these need to be used and provided by local third-party entities. Um in examples around the country and even in Colorado, you see that comes anywhere from lodgers' tax to regional transit authorities or even private businesses, ski resorts typically play a critical role in MRG funding in many communities within the the state of Colorado that see dependency on tourism traffic related to skis. And then just a couple other notes here. Um why Houston? Uh the proposal here would be targeting Houston as as uh Mike outlined there. Houston is the number three origin and destination market for overall air travel in and out of the Durango market. Um and that's without the benefit of daily non-stop service to stimulate that potential growth. That's actually ahead of Houston, uh correction, ahead of Phoenix um as an overall market despite Phoenix's, you know, two to three daily non-stop services. So the connectivity between Southeast Texas, Houston Market and Durango is very strong in its current environment. Um and the potential stimulation through added traffic could continue to to grow that. Um when we look at this year's summer performance, we've seen extremely strong uh results in terms of the Houston performance. It's running over an eighty-eight percent load factor over the course of the summer, showing really strong resiliency for that route to continue to gain steam. Uh pushing that into the winter is a more risky proposition for an airline. Um and hence the need, the potential need for a minimum revenue guarantee to try to emphasize and move that planning ahead in the the cycle for an airline. Um and then lastly, the proposed MRG uh at the current funding level would likely support two-time weekly service during a winter period that would last uh from just before the winter holidays in December and conclude uh at the end of March would be the timeline that would be anticipated.
The uh the ask is for a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, but the actual cost is probably closer to two hundred and fifty. Uh Tony received multiple um cost scenarios for an MRG with United and uh we have yet to see the cost for twenty twenty-six. So we're going off of the twenty twenty-five proposal. Um the balance will be paid by partnerships. So we've reached out to multiple partners that represent major employers and destinations who would contribute and participate in a co-marketing program, but also in funding the uh the effort. The uh the pilot also aligns with a destination management master plan proposal in that we are looking to promote underdeveloped seasonal traffic as opposed to encouraging traffic when when traffic's already here. The uh the metrics that we will use are uh load factors, um return of unspent money that that return would come to the city and actually go right back to council discretionary funds uh for lodger's tax. And then uh obviously we'll look at the increase in lodger's tax, incremental increase in lodger's tax and sales tax same time last year from the performance of of uh the pilot to uh to this year.
And to conclude, just a couple of notes on overall management of the program. Um if implemented, we would have uh ongoing monthly performance updates with the airline to be able to monitor how the route's performing, if any financial draws are needed to support the potential route, um and then help us to adjust local marketing plans to support the route and and best effort to make sure that it's sustainable long-term. Um MRG funds, as I noted before, are only drawn if the route underperforms. So if it performs two expectations or above, there's potentially limited to no financial outlay associated with it. Um and then at the end of the day, the long-term objective here is to create long-term year-round air service uh into the Houston market without the need for minimum revenue guarantees. The intent would not be for these to be long-term supports, but rather an ability to defer risk at the front end of service establishment and allow the airline to prove out the route during the slower season and subsequently allow it to sustain itself long term as the minimum revenue guarantees are either pivoted to another opportunity or not utilized anymore in the future.
And lastly, Tony and I did not coordinate shirts today, but it just so.
So we're used to little, raise your hand. All righty, Kip?
Mayor, I'm not sure the best way to approach this, but I've got questions for each of the presenters. So maybe we'll just run the that crowd up again and ask all of our questions of each presenter. Take turns. Does that work? Yeah.
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for taking the the first bullet. Um the, when we're looking at the reduced employee parking fees, um it it seems to me that uh two, three of those streets are are bordering the transit center parking in and of itself. Do we know if eliminating those streets because they're so close to transit center parking, would that make a substantial difference in either savings or in in the usage of the parking, right? If I'm parking forty feet away from the transit center parking, does it really make that big of a difference for this program?
I have, I don't have the meter revenue broken down by block like that. I know that of those ninety-one spaces that we identified, the average revenue of the, all of them is twenty-eight thousand three hundred. The um, all the streets on the west side of Narrow Gage, Seventh, Eighth and Ninth, um those are historically pretty underutilized and we don't generate a ton of meter revenue there. Actually, in twenty twenty-four, it was free parking um just to try to encourage folks out of those high-demand areas. And I do remember that it was low enough revenue to justify that pretty easily. Um, so does that answer your question at all?
It does a portion. So the northern section, obviously, that could make a significant difference for businesses up in the northern area. That's employees are working late, they're walking, all the safety concerns in those pieces. But we could keep the northern streets and we could eliminate the streets out of the southern piece that really are so close to the transit center in in my view.
Or and and hoping to bring the request cost down a little bit. Um yeah, and I think like a lot of the value in it is just that flexibility and the additional uh locations for folks because one of the big pieces of feedback that we do get is that if they get off of work at ten o'clock or midnight, that they don't want to walk to the transit center, they have some safety concerns. So if we do have, you know, just right off Main on Ninth Street, Eighth Street, Seventh Street, that is a little closer and a little bit less populated um than the transit center is. So I think a lot of the value there is in the diverse locations and the additional locations and the funding would be pretty small savings.
And and the turnover in those spaces being so, right, if I'm if I'm working a seven or eight-hour shift, waitering, waitressing, whatever that is, the turnover is reduced on the west side, but you don't, we we don't necessarily feel right now that those are, that's as big of an issue, right?
No, yeah, we're really looking at the blocks that have an eighty percent occupancy or higher to encourage turnover. And all of those blocks on the west side are within like twenty percent, forty percent occupancy most of the time.
Okay, great.
All right, hold on. Just since we got everybody's hand up, let's just go to the next person. Then we'll come back.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so Dave?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I don't have a question for transportation. I've got other questions for other presenters.
Does anybody have any transportation? Okay.
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks for the presentation. So let me just ask you regarding um free transit during the summer. Uh it's valued at around ninety-eight. Okay, so is that for seasons? So if you were to do free parking all year long, would that be four hundred thousand? I'm sorry, not free parking, free transit.
We generate about three hundred thousand dollars a year in fare box revenue. And then we have a contract with Fort Lewis for a hundred thousand so that all of their students ride free year round. So roughly four hundred, just a little over four hundred thousand a year and um and fare-related.
And um do employees get free transit?
Uh, city employees get free.
Employees get free transit? Okay. And so um you mentioned that ridership is up um during the free time. Um do we know if it's because of visitors or because it's free?
It's it's hard to differentiate who is riding because we're not capturing that demo demographic data, but we do have our annual ridership survey and about seven percent of visitors or seven percent of riders identify as visitors. Um and our survey is taken in September every year. So that's kind of outside of our high tourism season. Um we do know that the number of folks who are, this is anecdotal, but our drivers tell us that um, you know, there's a lot of people that are visiting, riding around the trolley just as an opportunity to see town and um can I get through the downtown area a little bit easier. Um our ridership uh numbers are a lot higher at areas like the campground on Animasview Drive and then other different, you know, hotel locations.
Okay, and um regarding the um, uh, I'm sorry, here I can't see my notes. Um, I'm sorry, I'll come back to it. I think that was all the questions I have. Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, um, thank you. I've heard great things about the employee parking program. Um question, um, transit center utilized during this program? Have we seen transit center spaces more utilized, less utilized? Are we maxed? We are not maxed. We have seen um, we have seen good usage. We're actually, right now, half of the transit center parking lot is closed down because we're installing um EV charging. So it's been, you know, not a great time to test the impact. Uh but we are seeing uh greater usage and um we've also been advertising the five dollar a day at the transit center lot a little bit more. So we think probably both of those are impacting the use.
And then my other comment on that one was kind of similar to Kip's, just are are making sure you're keeping a pulse on like where would be most utilized for businesses and and workers and safety and all that things, just because the transit center is, it is central, but it's one location and people at either end might have, you know, especially late-night workers anyways. Just keeping.
And we have, we did open up spaces around Buckley Park on twelve thirteenth and Buckley. And some of the feedback that we got from businesses was to take a look at the northern end of town and even like further south at Fifth Street to include different spaces.
Cool. And then my other question was the annual community events for sixteen thousand. Does any event that come and apply get it? And then do you just adjust your funding based on?
It's based, yeah, it's based on the availability of fleet and drivers since it is supplemental to our kind of core services. Um so whenever we can accommodate it, we do. We actually budgeted like spot-on um this year where where the fund is gonna pay for, I think, about five hundred dollars. But it was, it was pretty well budgeted. We know our events.
Yes.
Thank you. And Dave, what was your um topic? Oh, do you have some more transportation? Okay.
Thanks, Sarah. So a a question's pertinent for all of your um proposals here. Does partial funding benefit your goal here? Or any of these, if it's not fully funded, it's, don't do.
Um, I would say specifically free transit is flexible. We could do any variable amount of time for that one. Um and if we're looking at scalability, I would say that probably the biggest value and the um, the most well-used program is the uh downtown employee parking program at this point. The feedback that we've heard from the residents is just effusive, like gratitude that um city council has directed funding to address the problem that we've been hearing about for so long. The events, um we could go back to a system of charging per the hour for events, which we've done in the past. Um and you know, we could limit that to a certain number of of events or like larger events, whatever, you know, you guys are interested in.
Do you feel like the events organizers having some skin in the game, them them paying something into that would restrict us too much? It it it's always something that I like. I I like them to be putting up some money as well. We're subsidizing.
And we do have um an example of that with snowdown. The bid and snowdown both come to the table with funding for that one as well. So there's a precedent for that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Any more transportation? Good. Oh, wait.
Thank you. I'm I'm sorry, Sarah. Just one more question, what I was uh trying to get at here. So what percentage of um the entire cost is subsidized, uh of transportation is subsidized with the parking with with the fees?
That's a great question. I want to say that, Dave, you were in this presentation with me last year. Do you remember? I mean, Counselor, I'm so sorry.
What I'm trying to get at is would it benefit the community to have year-round free transit? I mean, that's really ultimately what I'm trying to figure out. Um if in fact, you know, how is it worth it? Because I know in many communities, transit is free all the time. And so that's really where I'm trying to get at with the conversation.
Yeah, I believe uh we hear from um writers frequently that they would very much love free transit year-round. It is, you know, that would be an additional amount of funding that we would have to secure on top of what um we're currently generating. So we we operate a deficit already. So we would have to add that to the deficit. Yeah.
Maybe it was a quick follow-up, Sarah. How much is it for one way? Is it a dollar?
A dollar.
A dollar. And or is there any sort of scaling?
Yeah, yeah. Seniors and people living with disabilities are fifty cents. And then there are a number of monthly pass options. And this is a great opportunity. Um also just to remind everyone that we've had a very generous donation um from the Michael and Elaine Moravan Foundation, and that's funding low-income annual transit passes uh for at least the next two years.
Awesome. Thank you.
All righty, Dave, what was your topic?
Uh, Mayor, I just had one for Commander Dunlop. I think he was next in the, in the queue anyway. Commander, how are you?
Good.
Um, correct me, did did we give funding last year out of the same uh lodger's tax determination for, and how many did we purchase last year? Do you recall?
I think it was an additional trailer and seven.
Okay, seven. And then what is the ask? How many are we would be potentially purchasing for this ground?
Maybe it been eight last year. It's another seven. It's the trailer with some additional storage boxes on it that we haven't gotten in the past that help store the cables and stuff. So it's the the trailer, the storage boxes on the trailer. It is uh, seven barricades, another gates that'll give us three gates um that are for emergency vehicles to safely access the area, but still allow for protection. Um, some additional movers to allow for more employees to deploy them. And then this ask does also cover um a four thousand dollar training where they bring in their certified trainer to Durango. They spend an entire day working with the crew that's gonna be setting them up, but they also work with like Barclay or Ellen or whoever else is gonna be a certified uh planner to kind of set these up. So um we don't have that training right now. Um so this will help us get that training to allow for certified use of them. Uh and then a third trailer that will allow for more expeditious deployment of the systems to include the extra movers uh and the extra barriers and stuff.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then remind me again, how many does it take to to protect a space?
I know you were gonna ask that. I'm not. I actually picked up this funding ask not having been involved in the past. Um I believe they cover, there's like twelve feet of space in between the barriers, and then they put a cable in there. And if a vehicle strikes the cable, it still brings the barriers around and disperses the energy that goes into it. Um so I think to to block off like Ninth Street, like let's just imagine the West one-hundred block in Ninth Street, I think it takes without the gates, like five barriers across. So this, it's my understanding that this will allow us to completely shut down, I believe, two blocks safely. I mean, we're not up to snowdown stuff yet, but snowdown's once a year. Um but this will allow us to cover most of the two-block events uh that the city kind of sponsors downtown. And it would be completely protected with these barriers, not having to rely on alternative uh means of protection, like the train was great last year for snowdown. Um, those are great relationships to have, but there's also complications moving them for emergency vehicles. Those are great relationships to have, but there's also complications moving them for emergency vehicles and whatnot.
So he's absolutely right. And I'm not sure of the exact numbers, the exact number of feet and everything else, but I do know that we've used them in the past incorrectly because we haven't had enough of them. And this is enough to shut down half of Main Street essentially. And we're able to use, you know, some of the train cars and some of the other things, as we said previously. However, we're not able to get emergency vehicles through using those items. And so that's why the gates and whatnot are important. But we want to use it as instructed and as the training, you know, instead of just kind of piecemealing it together, so to speak. But I do know it's half of the, half of Maine with this ask.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chief. Then how many times have we deployed these in the last year that we've had them? I mean, approximately, I'm not looking for an exact number.
That's an excellent question, but I think we've used them in the last year at least at four or five events. I mean, most recently, I know they were out for a brew fest. I know that we used them for snowdown. I don't know that we deploy them for the shutting down Main Avenue for the farmer's market. Because I know there's also some staffing issues that go along with. They are, yeah, they take a little bit of time to break down and set up. And the more staffing that's trained in that, that we can like tap into potentially streets or some other people outside of Parks and Rec, they can get deployed more quickly.
Okay. Mayor, may I ask one more question? Commander, what, what's in an ideal world? How many would, would the police department like to have? Bless you. How many, how many would, would I, would the ideal number be for the city to procure?
If I may ask you back with that, because our largest event every year, of course, is snowdown.
Sure.
And so if we're planning for that, it would be a lot, like close to almost 200. But that would provide like a huge area of protection using just this. I think in my conversations with Ellen, I believe she said that this will cover us on most events up to, but not quite snowdown. Again, we're going to have to tap into some other safety measures for a large event that takes place all the way down. But yeah, this here will get us close. And then we might, in the next coming years, we might ask for a few more as we kind of expand it out. And once we get the training, I might have to revise that in the future as we come back and make sure if we're wanting to stay compliant. Again, the benefit about having the training and setting these up in a certified manner is that if we do have a worst-case scenario, somebody intrudes in there, then it's covered. I, in speaking with one of the reps, they set these up in New Orleans when that, when the gentleman about a year ago went through and that was an intentional incursion. They were not using the barriers properly. And actually, that gentleman first was looking at targets in Orlando. But Orlando is so locked in on their safety that he felt that it was unreasonable for him to try to do that incursion there. So when he went and surveilled New Orleans, he's like, okay, I can get through and meet my objective there. So the, the training is a key component of this as well. In the training, we might have to revise some of our asks, but we got to balance out the budget with our services.
Great. Thank you so much, Commander.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, so we're good. Oh, you got.
Buddy, Mayor, sorry. Commander, just to make sure that I've got the numbers right, 2024, we took, we did 100,000. 2025, we did 100, 115, something along those lines. And then in 2026, we'd be asking for another 115.
Yeah.
Okay. And then if the trailer was subtracted, you could still use the barricades, the additional barricades. It would just be a time impact.
It would be driving back, loading the barriers onto the trailer, driving back down, deploying them out. It, it would cut our deployment time by a third or more because you're having to load them just to offload them again. So the, the trailer request is an efficiency request as much as it is a, yeah, convenience.
Great. Thank you very much.
All righty, so thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody have any questions on the childcare portion?
Yeah, Mayor, I've got questions for every one of the presenters, so.
Okay, Sarah. You're on the gauntlet.
Thank you.
It looks like Shirley's.
Yeah, that's what I was just about to say.
Thank you for the presentation. Could you just clarify? You said 260 was the request over four, four years?
No, 260 is the initial request from the city. So actually, the public sector, in our plan, we had, we had identified 800,000 from the public sector in the first year. So that would include the city of Durango, towns of Bayfield, Ignacio, and the county as well. But we made some adjustments to our request based on staff recommendations of what was possible in this budget. And so this 260 would still be very relevant to our investment fund because we have philanthropic foundations that are willing to match that.
And for one year?
For one year.
260 for one year is the request from the city. Okay. And you mentioned, I'm familiar with the plan, which I think is great. And I know a lot of work and effort went into that plan. And so is it implementable and a fair, I know that just sometimes having so many partners, I mean, can we move somewhat quickly on the request?
Yeah, the biggest difference between this plan versus our three-year workforce housing investment strategy that we did a few years ago was that it called to stand the Regional Housing Alliance of La Plata County, a housing authority, a multi-jurisdictional housing authority backup to help execute on some of this. We have the Early Childhood Council of La Plata County that has been here for 28 years and has never received local investment before. All of their funding has come from foundations and state and federal funds, and they have deployed that to all of the childcare providers around the county and in the region. So they are stood up and ready to manage this fund and deploy these funds in the manner that we've directed in the plan.
And you mentioned the number of slots in your remarks. Can you repeat it, please?
I'm sorry, the number.
The number of childcare slots?
Yes, we are looking to increase the number of childcare slots to 300.
300.
New childcare slots.
New.
And, and over the five years, 420 childcare slots in La Plata County.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Which is again, turning around a trajectory of only of less than 1,000 slots by 2030, if we don't do anything about the childcare crisis.
Jessica, do you have questions?
Yeah, you mentioned matching funds with, from the public, matching funds that the public partners put in. You're requesting 260 from us. Do you have other requests from other public partners who, and you know how much?
Yes, we do have other requests from public partners, including Bayfield and Ignacio, that are looking into what they can do with their budgets. They've already started doing some work. Ignacio has started already taking on some work to create an early childcare program through their school district. The county as well, of course, with the reallocation of lodgers tax 1A and the call out for that, for dollars specifically to go to childcare. We are, we are, we have asked the county to allocate those dollars that they have set aside for childcare to this investment fund. Two out of three commissioners at this point have said that they would make sure that at least 150,000 gets to us next year. They have stated that they have frozen those funds until things are resolved with visitoring.
Okay, so 150,000 from the county potentially?
At least, yes.
Yeah. And then Bayfield and Ignacio, you're still waiting on. And then is the alliance deploying the funds or will?
The Early Childhood Council of La Plata County will host the fund. We will help partner with them to use best practices, but they've already had funds that are similar, but they've never come from local. Again, they've always been state or federal or foundation funds that they've managed. But this will be the first local fund that we can use to catalyze, much like we've done with the catalyst fund at the Alliance for pre-development on workforce housing projects.
And you're saying 300 new slots plus all the other things you were listing, is that with everyone putting in the max amount of money that you're thinking is going to happen? Bayfield, Durango, Ignacio, the county? And if funds don't, like, if we say, okay, great, 260, but then everyone else says no, nothing, what, how does that number change and fluctuate?
We have, right now, we have about 1.3 million in, if the council funds at 260, we have about 1.3 million of of commitments that we're looking at for 2026. So once we have our first commitment, we can start promoting exactly where they're all coming from, but they are waiting on our public partners right now.
Okay, yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Just one question. So it, correct assumption that Durango would have the biggest need for childcare. We're generating the largest need for childcare. And so funding requests from us being the larger request makes a lot of sense, correct?
Correct, yes. This is very similar to how the IGA is funded with the RHA or the Alliance. It is based on kind of a formula with population being the basis for it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Dave, no questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Mike? Hands? Looks like Shirley's on.
I think mine just comes up first. Anyway, hi, thank you, Mike and Tony. So a couple of questions. That you mentioned that this is a pilot project, but that also I've heard that this has been done before. So can you elaborate on what makes this one a pilot, if it's been done in the past?
Yeah, so I think the short answer to that is this would be a pilot in Durango. MRG programs are very well-known across the country and across the state and other areas. However, an MRG hasn't been utilized in our market in decades.
Okay, so it had, you mentioned, it's my understanding that it has been done before. It's just been a while?
Correct. My understanding, it was, MRGs were utilized in the Durango market in the 90s, early 90s for some ski service support through purgatory. I don't have the details. That was well before my time here at the airport, but they have been used here, but it's been several decades.
Okay, thank you. And then you mentioned Houston. Is the Houston flight still going?
It is not. So the seasonal service for the United flew on Houston wrapped up on August 18th. It started on Memorial Day, so it ran through the core summer season. On that front, we'll be having full debrief with United later this week to talk about the full results. But all data that we have through July looked extremely strong.
And you mentioned that, that your, your enterprise fund, that those funds, enterprise funds cannot be used to fund this. Is there other things that can be done to free up airport funds that could be used for some other purpose?
Then the short answer is no. FAA regulations are very clear that airport funds cannot be used for any type of airline subsidy or minimum revenue guarantee program. Those have to come from an external source. The airport's role is actually limited to an advisory capacity. So hence, you know, when I work with Mike on this, I provide essentially advisory services around what our knowledge is around air service development and opportunities from the airlines. But the program itself would be administered by a third party, which in this case would essentially function through the prosperity office and Mike's team with the airport, of course, playing an advisory role.
And so I'll ask one question and I'll hand it over. I have a few more, but do we have an economic impact analysis of what this might bring to the, to the economy if we were to support this item?
Mike might be able to elaborate as well. The airport as a whole, our latest CDOT Economic Impact Study, which was recently published, showed a $342 million overall economic impact annually on the total regional economy through job support and visitation as well. When you kind of break that down on a per-passenger standpoint, I'd have to do some quick math in my head on that front. So it's difficult for me to quantify that on the fly.
Yeah, the only thing I would expand on that is June happened to be the best month ever on record for the airport. And it was led by the Houston line, which had the largest load capacity. And so that, that really speaks volumes of why Houston makes sense. In terms of economic impact, I would defer to, you know, what that, what the economic impact numbers are from the airport specifically. But June did fairly well comparatively in both sales tax and lodger's tax comparatively to, to last year.
That was next. Speaking on that, Mike, so connecting improvements in sales tax to flyers from Houston, when we have seen substantial increases in, in usage through the airport each year. Can, can we talk a little bit about how we're going to tease that data out?
Yeah, we would look at sales tax, right, performance and assume, make some assumptions that, that, that the traffic is, is impacting it. But we also recognize that the demographic that's coming in from Houston is a little bit different type of visitor. They happen to stay here a little bit longer. They spend a little bit more just based on the type of demographic that it is. It is the target demographic that we're trying to bring in, especially in a, in a quote unquote off-season. So it really, it really does impact us in a positive way when you look at, you know, all visitors in terms of their type of demographic.
But we would have difficulty pulling out the, the specific economic impact of those Houston flyers, correct?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the way we would do that, Counselor, is we would run promotions and packages and actually look at the impact of those promotions and packages. And that's where our destination partners come into play. It's why they would do a pay-to-play is they would benefit and actually see, you know, who's taking advantage of their packages, whether it's hotel stays bundled with tickets for Perg or Hot Springs or what have you. So we'll be able to track those promotions and, and as marketing efforts.
Okay. And then just one, I believe it was MRGs that subsidized the Delta service to Salt Lake City back in the early 2000s. Does anybody know if that's accurate or not?
I can't confirm that. I don't believe that to be the case. My understanding is the only MRGs that I've heard of in our market were specific ski service support in the 90s, but I can't completely, completely confirm that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, guys. Do we anticipate aligning a targeted marketing push to, to really incentivize and capture more guests to come in, aligning with some of this MRG work?
Yeah, we would double down on marketing to that specific market and again, using promotions from destination partners to, to reach into those markets. So not only our platform, but the platform of, when I say our, visitor angle platform, but also the platform of those, those partners who contributed marketing dollars to, you know, to make this successful. The, the objective is so that everybody, if everybody's contributing, everybody wants their money back. So they're going to make it as successful as possible and probably put good money after, after, after the contribution to make sure that that contribution was, was well, well-placed.
Good. Thank you. And then last question, kind of follow-up. Maybe this is more of a financial question. If, if we ended up, because it did so well that we did not have to invest any money, what happens to that money that we did invest out of the lodger's tax? The 185K that we may not have, may not have gotten spent?
Comes back to the council and then discretionary funding.
Okay. For use that year or could it be for 2027?
It is for that, depending on when we find out, it could be used for that year. If not, it would then just go into the fund balance for it to be carried over to the next year.
Gotcha. And remind me, guys, when is this anticipated to be?
It would start December 19th, 2026, and run through the end of March in 2027.
Thank you for that reminder. Okay, so we have a year and change to, to plan.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
We're done with this section?
Mayor, I did have one thing I'd love to suggest to council. When we get to the budget retreat, I would love to have as an option that we reserve some of the discretionary fund for opportunities that may pop up in 2026 as one of our options. So I just wanted to put that out and I'll try and go through a formal process to make sure that's part of our discussions at the budget retreat. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, so we're ready for the next step.
Under council-requested presentations, we have presentation on the feedback received from the 30% Downtown Next Steps community engagement.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Clancy Nixon. I'm the Community Engagement Specialist for the city. And I'm here to report on our engagement push that we did in June for downtown's next step in the 30% design. This, I forgot to mention, this also supports our community, our engage and inform community strategic plan goal area. Okay, so we hosted four different meetings. They were pretty much weekly throughout the month of June. And we targeted different stakeholder groups. So we had business owners, downtown employees, residents, and an accessibility focused meeting throughout the month of June, with residents having our highest attendance rate with 99 folks who showed up. Big thank you to the community. I was really impressed with the numbers and how they showed up and how they participated in each of these meetings. So don't want to forget to thank all of them who showed. By the numbers, so you can see here is an example of one of the tables that we set up at those meetings. So this is a very complex project, I think, as we all are very well aware at this point with lots of different elements. So we had folks running through different tables to learn more and to be able to ask questions kind of in a station format. With these attendees, they also were given worksheets and an informational packet. And we asked them to fill out those worksheets. Each of those worksheets had 21 different questions, with almost all of them being open ended in the prompts for feedback. In addition to the worksheets, we had sticky notes. We had the full roll plot of downtown Main Avenue in the 30% design. And then asked folks to provide sticky note comments on that as they look through it at that station. And we had 29 visitor questionnaires that were completed. We had the questionnaires at the welcome center and had a QR code and asked our welcome center staff to to kind of push it as people were coming in and maybe waiting for the bathroom or whatever it may be. So we had 29 responses there. So that brings us to 1,744 comments that we received. And again, like I said, open ended comments that we were receiving for most of it, it was a bear for analysis. And so that's coming to you with, after this presentation, if you would like me to pull out anything specific that you would like to look at, I'd be happy to do that. But this is a general overview and summary. I don't want to take up massive amounts of time going through it all. That being said, with the worksheets, we did scan in each of those worksheets. We had a staff crew scanning in all of those worksheets and then AI was used to help with the analysis. If you have ever used AI in qualitative feedback analysis, it's not easy. It does make it easier. So just to be clear there, there's very much a human touch involved there. I think that's all with that one. So we had 267 sticky note comments on that roll plot, 131 detailed worksheets that were collected. If returning this into a competition, residents had the highest response rate with those worksheets with 60% of them completing the worksheet. So good job, residents. I wanted to also show a couple of examples of comments that we received in these worksheets, just to show the very wide gap and the spectrum of how folks feel about this project as far as our community goes. So I'm actually going to read both of them. I did take out the expletives. They were in there. But our four comment was be a community leader and push the max amount of bike pet infrastructure possible. Leading sometimes means not caving to the loudest complainers and doing what is right for Durango in the long term. Please do not settle for anything less than bold, creative, imaginative spaces for cyclists and pets and yes, cars too. Thank you. Against the infrastructure needs replacing, do it. We will need to close off Main to do this. Do it and leave the town, the charming historic place millions of people come here to enjoy. We're not a front range tinsel town or Grand Junction with curves. Please listen to the majority of the people here. Don't just hold meetings and waste people's time when you're not going to listen to them. And so here's the balancing act, right? We have very, very different viewpoints about this project. We started each of the meetings just asking folks to raise their hand if they were passionate and felt passionate about this project and if they loved Durango to just try to put the wheels on the track right away. And have respect for each other's opinions, but these are the types of things that we were looking at when we were doing the analysis in each of those worksheets. So some of the top themes that came through in those worksheets and in the surveys. Parking had 535 mentions. That was the top theme. I'm going to provide some context here in a second. It was followed by pedestrian safety and accessibility, business impacts, traffic flow, and then in the the infrastructure replacement. Curb extensions, when they were mentioned, they were rolled into parking and traffic flow, just kind of depending on the feedback and the context there. Loading zones are rolled into business impact and the buffer space concerns are also rolled into the pedestrian safety and accessibility. If those were called out. Some key contexts that I want to provide you with. Parking, we definitely wanted to hear about. So we had different prompts. We had three different prompts on those worksheets for parking. That being said, if somebody, if a resident filled out the worksheet and mentioned parking in each of those prompts, that brings us to 393 mentions alone. So I just wanted to provide that context. So it comes away as the clear winner as far as universal themes, but we did ask about it more frequently in those worksheets. In addition, I wanted to also, that's in comparison to pedestrian safety and accessibility. We mentioned that just once in a section header on the worksheet and it comes in a second. So some key contexts, I think, here in that analysis. Okay, so what we heard by stakeholder groups. So the business owners emphasize that appropriate loading zone space for deliveries and customers. Traffic flow impacts from curb extensions were concerning and especially for large trucks. And then preserving that buffer space between parked cars and traffic. Residents focused on, they had strong support for pedestrian and bike improvements, environmental enhancements like trees and landscaping, and they had a pragmatic acceptance of most design elements. Accessibility community highlighted the van accessible parking needs, clear pathways without obstacles, and universal support for pedestrian safety include improvements. Downtown employees called out cycling infrastructure improvements, delivery logistics questions. They had an employee parking availability. And then visitors in the form of that survey preferred outdoor dining when the weather is nice. That was the prompt. Trees and shade was the top amenity that they identified. And current parking satisfaction is at 62%. I did want to highlight that a little bit more because we haven't frequently asked for visitor feedback and they are a key stakeholder, especially for downtown businesses. With that parking prompt, which was I found a parking spot that was convenient for accessing, accessing downtown. And then there was a myriad of responses. They could rate it at two respondents disagreed with the prompt and 18 out of 21 agreed or strongly agreed. With the wider sidewalks, the prompt was wider sidewalks would improve my experience downtown. 12 out of 29 agreed or strongly agreed and 15 were neutral and two disagreed. I think the neutral, the high neutral comes from them just not knowing. They just were like, ah, I don't know. And especially when it was tied to a project. Let's see, moving on. So where our community agrees, these are the elements that received positive feedback across all of the stakeholder groups. So there was pretty much everybody said, yes, the utility infrastructure replacement needs to be updated. Those pedestrian safety improvements, all groups support that. ADA compliance enhancement enhancements, strong support there. And then sidewalk widening was generally positive. And I'll go into the sentiment analysis here in a second. And then thoughtful art and amenities with an emphasis on cultural sensitivity. So some key concerns that were raised throughout this process and what keeps folks up at night, parking reduction. I don't think there's a surprise there. I think we've all heard that one. The loading zone adequacy, 40 feet doesn't take into account the lift gates is the quote that is most representative of that. I will say that after we, our team went back and looked at the design and did a more in depth review of that 30% design, we had originally presented 40 feet to the community. And we found that they actually are currently designed as 44 feet, just to provide you with that. Winter operations and construction disruption, and then the cost and the return on investment were also key concerns. Okay, by block, this is, the by block feedback is from the post it notes that were put on the full roll plot. We had 267 total comments. Again, some of the blocks were not identified. So that's why you're seeing a discrepancy in the number there with 267 total comments. And they're not adding up in those three spaces, just so you know. Accessibility had the absolute highest engagement with 1.6 comments per attendee with the sticky notes. They were really engaged with the sticky notes and provided a lot of really great commentary with where they see problems with accessibility. The 1,000 to 1,300 blocks received the most feedback. And then parking and loading access was consistent. We have named as a concern across all of the areas. Winter, winter maintenance, ADA accessibility are also prevalent themes. And that suggests that it's a priority issue for the community regardless of the location downtown. Okay, so a little bit more quantitative here. We had folks in the worksheets rank the amenity zone elements that they preferred. Number one came out as street trees with a weighted score of 4.15, followed by seating, public restrooms, shade elements, and then sculptures slash public art. This one's going to be interesting when you see this next slide, though. So you can see tree prioritization. We asked a question of would you prioritize installing more trees over prioritizing sidewalk space, bistro areas, amenity zones and art slash sculptures? And it looks like it conflicts with the previous slide where trees were kind of identified as a as a top runner. When you, this is where it's important to be smart with the questions that we're asking. And when you, when you pit something specifically against something else, because there is give and take in this project. There's, there's a whole lot of constraints going on downtown. This demonstrates, okay, now we're talking about different elements and prioritization. So in the previous question, we did not ask for ranking wider sidewalks or bistro areas. And so when we asked them to think about those when it comes to trees, their preference lessens a little bit. They said, you can see here that they, 60% of folks said no, that they wouldn't prioritize installing more trees. So it's just a great example of the complexity of the feedback that we're receiving and all the thing, all the feedback that we're having to balance. Another great example, you know, you talk about trees and our city arborist, when we're talking about technical stakeholder feedback, our city arborist, Matt Bisecker, will provide us with data supporting more trees and the economic impact of that. But then if you talk to DFPD, for instance, you know, they have data saying more trees is is problematic for fire mitigation. So these are the types of things that when we're looking at the design that we're having to balance. Okay, so the sentiment analysis. This is one of the instances where AI was utilized to help with the sentiment analysis from the worksheets. Sentiment analysis is not cut and dry. It is not black and white, as people generally believe. People don't give simple answers, especially with the open end feedback. They may say they don't support the design because they want longer curb extensions, for instance, which can affect the overall sentiment if we're not careful in looking through this answer by answer. So someone could be sarcastic in their comments and in their response, which AI would not detect. So I went through each of the individual responses for these topics to make sure that they were categorized and assign the appropriate sentiment. So to go into this a little bit further, if it's rated as positive, they're in support. The response was they were in support or they want more of that element. Bike parking neutrals include folks who want or support bike parking, but they don't necessarily want it on Main. And then turning lane negatives include folks who want to remove the center turn lane and create a bike lane instead, or people who don't think a turning lane is needed. And then the neutrals there are folks who want to leave it as is or didn't express a clear opinion. Mixed is they expressed a positive and a negative in the same sentence. Okay, so again, balancing the feedback, we're taking the public feedback and we're weighing that with the technical stakeholder needs as well. There's environmental constraints there with the project. We only have so much room downtown on Main. And then the requirements and like legal and regulatory requirements are also being brought into the picture, of course. So like our MS4 permit requirements have to be considered as well. So that's how we hopefully will get to the project goal in designing something with the entire community in mind and what's needed. So what's coming? We are here at the council study session. We're looking to do a 60, get the 60% design this fall and then host a meeting in October, bringing that back to the community and letting them know what changes we made. And then the 90% design and then to the final design and then the engineer's estimate where we'll have that cost estimate. Any questions?
Yes, let's have some questions. If there's none, that's good because we're going to run out of time here.
Especially thank you for all your hard work. That was great, very good summary and I appreciate the effort in June to get her done.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, it was a, it was a huge team effort. Yes, definitely. Can't say thank you enough to, we pulled in a lot of people for this one.
Well, thank you, Clancy.
All right, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Sarah Humphrey with Parks and Recreation. And I'm here to present options for additional dog parks in the city. Rachel Hart is joining me in the audience. If you have technical questions on design, she's our Parks, Open Space and Trails Design Manager. Adding additional amenities to the park system supports our city mission of providing outstanding services and experiences for the entire community. The current conditions are that the city only has one off leash area. It is located at the base of Smelter Mountain. We have received feedback regarding increased off leash interactions. And we see our sports fields, schoolyards and popular parks being treated as off leash areas. In 2023, the Parks Inventory and Future Needs Assessment recommended looking into, looking at neighborhood parks for additional opportunities for adding dog parks. In that document, Folsom, Pioneer and Jenkins Ranch Park were all identified for evaluation. The requests that we're seeing from the community is a desire for additional off leash dog areas at the north end of town, along the Amis River Trail and with a separate area for small dogs. And then also in an area with existing amenities. So the evaluation criteria we used, city owned land or existing park that had the space, a recommended dog park is around an acre on the small side. Desirable location near the Amis River Trail, availability of parking and walkability, impacts to nearby neighbors and residents and existing amenities such as restrooms, et cetera. So the potential locations that this staff evaluated were Jenkins Ranch Park, Rank Park, 29th Street, Rio Vista, Folsom Park, Pioneer. The city owned a lot at Second and 32nd Street, which some of you might remember was the old recycle drop off. And then also Holly Park. So this presentation is primarily focused on that. It is important. And worth mentioning that there is potential to upgrade the dog park with an existing, existing dog park with a small dog play area. Pardon me. A dog park is also part of Durango Mesa Future Development and it's proposed for 2026. The Humane Society has reached out to Parks and Recreation. They have a seven acre lot located below their main facility that they have expressed that there might be an opportunity in the future for a lease. It's very steep. But there's some additional options out there. So the map is the overall ranking map. We did red, blue, or I'm sorry, red, blue and green. We did green, yellow and red. The green dots denote desirable locations, meaning the majority of our criteria. Yellow dots have potential, but lack some of the criteria that we were using to evaluate this for this presentation. And the red dot was deemed undesirable. And the red dot was was deemed undesirable. So starting off with Jenkins Ranch, it is located on Jenkins Ranch Road in the Sky Ridge neighborhood. The area outlined in blue is point eight acres and is within the stormwater treatment area. Further consideration of this site would require additional stormwater management best practice or potentially moving the site to the adjacent hillside. The park is situated along a multi-use path, though it is not along the Amis River Trail. Rank Park is located south of the Durango High School baseball field. The areas outlined in blue, it's point eight eight acres that we've kind of designate or decided on. It's located at the flat top at the part of the it's okay, at the flat part of the park, kind of on the top on the southern boundary, northern boundary, I apologize. Main benefits to using this site are the proximity to the Amis River Trail and there's a substantial buffer to the residential neighbors with Junction Creek separating and River Trail. The site would be a walkable site, there's very limited parking, the closest street is Alamo Drive and it's fairly congested. 29th Street is off the terminus of East Third Avenue and the far south end of Memorial Park. Some benefits to this site is that there's a seasonal restroom nearby, there is parking. The site does border six residential properties and it is a smaller site, it's point six six acres. The Amis River Trail section adjacent to this is slated for redevelopment in 2026, which would mean any improvements to this area would likely be pushed out till 2027. Also kind of of note during the warm months, we see a lot of river use and there is pretty limited parking in that kind of area of town, Memorial Park and the 29th Street parking area. Rio Vista, kind of to orient you all here, it's located near the high school bridge and has a trail spur leading from Rio Vista neighborhood. The current or the alignment for the Amis River Trail redevelopment is hand drawn in blue there and it's kind of overlaid. I left the city owned GIS layer on just for reference for how large that area is, it is city owned property, even though we're just discussing and evaluating the point seven eight acres in the blue, light blue outline polygon. The location does have a cut trail that connects River View Drive to the Amis River Trail that's used pretty heavily by schoolchildren, who I live in that neighborhood, so that's who I see there. Going back to that 2023 facility parks and facility inventory, we evaluated Folsom Park, Folsom Park is located off Florida Road just past Chapman Hill. The blue polygon pictured is at the far north end of the park and it sits at point five nine acres. Some benefits to this site is a seasonal restroom, there's more than adequate parking. It would address the issue of our baseball field being used as an ad hoc dog park. The cons to this site is there's a minimal buffer area between the existing residential neighbors and Folsom is an organically managed park, which would make turf rehabilitation from heavy traffic and heavy use more challenging. It is located along the Florida River, Florida, Florida Road shared use path, but it is not along the Amis River Trail. Pioneer Park is located on the north end of town off of 37th Street. The blue polygon is point seven five acres and the pink shaded area shows the city owned part of that parcel. Kind of worth noting, there is a residential in holding within that park, so the neighbor would be immediately adjacent. Cons were there's no connection from Pioneer Park to the Amis River Trail as the train track crossing is located at 36th Street. Pioneer is also an organically managed park making turf rehabilitation challenging. Part of this polygon is in a natural area that's relatively undeveloped on the far corner, if you're familiar with Pioneer. Springs to the old recycle center located at East Second Avenue and 32nd Street. This was the smallest of all the parcels that we looked at at point three seven acres. This is located directly behind North City Market, if you're not familiar with that, it is city owned. There are no improvements, there is an at grade crossing that could connect to the Amis River Trail at Amis City Park on the southern end. We have decided this just doesn't seem like a good area, it's very small, there's no parking. I don't think it's a good candidate, it got the red dot from staff. Holly Park is located off Holly Avenue and 31st Street. The polygon drawn is just showing the majority of the park in the light blue at 3.4 acres. Currently, the site is undeveloped, it was a former dump site, has some surface debris, glass, broken stuff. It's in a fairly natural state, there are some trails that go through it, does see it's open to the public for use. There's only on-street parking, it is bordered by I believe six residences. Yeah, six residences on the southern, pardon me, the southern side. And it's also not located along the Amis River Trail. So the top three locations from the staff evaluation were Rank Park, Rio Vista and 29th Street. 29th Street and Rio Vista both have residential neighbors immediately adjacent to the park or the proposed dog park area, 29th Street would share a boundary with six residents. And as I said before, there's going to be trail development in that area, so likely that won't even be an option till 2027. There's also a soft surface trail that's designated the OP Reams Trail, she passed fairly recently. I think we'd have to do some evaluation on the historical significance of that if we were really going to look at cutting that off. Rio Vista, the site does have neighbors, although they're uphill, there's three lots that are adjacent to that parcel and kind of how I drew polygon. Based on this, our recommendation is to move forward with evaluation, further evaluation of Rank Park. It's bordered to the north by Durango High School. We do not share any residential boundaries with that polygon as it's drawn, though there are neighbors across Junction Creek off of Alamo Drive. Rank Park does have naturally occurring springs in the hillside. So some further evaluation of the area would need to be done to determine if the springs would impact usability. So next steps would include talking with Durango School District to see if adding that amenity on our side of the fence would impact any of their operations. We do share that northern park boundary with them. Then we could move to neighborhood engagement with the residents on Alamo and in the surrounding area. And based on feedback from residents, we could proceed to a site selection. Parks and Recreation did request in the 2026 capital improvement budget, some funds to put a dog play area within the existing park system.
Okay, so question, looks like your first step.
Thanks, Sarah, appreciate all the work that went into this, for sure. So there was a a map that I was looking at that had land to the west of the high school bridge. And I'm not sure that's city owned land, but I'm not sure if that was considered as part of this, does that make sense?
Are you talking about the parcel that's, do you have a picture?
I do.
Can I see?
Yeah, yeah, visual is always better.
Yeah, so one of the issues with this is the train tracks and crossing the train tracks. So there is with the Rank Park.
Yeah, sorry.
My fault. With the trail improvements coming from Rank Park going to Memorial, there will be some improvements to that crossing, but allowing access to that and crossing the train tracks, I think is always a concern. There's additional concerns when we put dog play areas next to the river as far as stormwater or not stormwater, I'm sorry, water quality management, there needs to be some buffers. There's some concern about dog feces getting into the river, so.
Sorry, we don't have the same concerns that the huge dog park bordered by the Amis River right now? We do, okay.
Jenny has Nikovich has been very good about having discussion with us about what a new improvement would look like.
Okay.
And the things that we would really need to consider to.
And maybe we don't want to add to the problem, it I get that. Okay, the Rank Park, it's a lot of hill in that piece, so the baseball field borders that is the northern border on that is if I come down that Rank Park hill, there's a like a intersection of the three paths there. Is there an ability to spread out into that or the paths would form a border that we don't want to cross?
No, I think we would, we would do the northern border and then come partway down the hill, we went and did some site visits there.
Okay.
It's really easy to lose your dog over the hill. There's some visibility, so I think we would want to be really strategic in where we place the southern boundary there so that folks weren't losing sight of their dogs and we're having additional dog interactions or something where their people can't see them.
So your distances here, the measurements that you had for each of the parks, that would include not going too far down that hill, the Rank Park dimensions?
I believe so.
Okay, okay.
What it doesn't include is if the Durango High School would require a buffer, substantial buffer, if they have any concern about baseball, the men's baseball field does go to that far fence. The ladies softball is shorter and not really probably an impact, you'd have to really get a hold of one.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you'd really go through. And why not Oxbow, it just wasn't considered, was there?
We did not evaluate Oxbow, I think a few issues, parking, it gets really heavy seasonal use. There's just, I don't know where we would put that, the preserve does not allow dogs, so and I think we're treating the waters property at this time, the same as the preserve. So the footprint of Oxbow Park is fairly small.
Okay.
And probably just not enough room, really.
And last question, Mayor, I promise that the conversation has all standard on one park. Is there, was there any conversation about us doing two smaller parks or anything, just to spread that amenity out around the city?
The funding evaluation, what we asked for is probably just enough for one.
Okay.
But I suppose we could evaluate a second of the top three with the staff evaluation, two of them would be affected by the Amis River Trail construction in 2026.
Got it, okay, so maybe sequential.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Right, surely.
Thank you, thank you very much for the presentation. So just, you mentioned that there was a budget request, is, can you share how much that?
Sure, we requested $50,000.
Okay, and is that, is that enough?
I mean, it depends on the price of things and fencing and I think we tried to do a fairly conservative evaluation of just basically adding fencing, a trash can, a pad for a bench and a bench, so not, not like a play feature and an automatic water.
No, and not.
Fairly conservative just to upgrade an existing park with a dog play area.
And I guess that was really my question, I I've heard that dog parks are heavy maintenance. And so I guess I wanted to ask, it sounds like there's not that much to do to improve it. But what is the maintenance, is it regarding water quality, is it regarding the damage they do, or what what makes them heavy maintenance?
I think it's compaction and wear, so in a neighborhood upgrade with an existing amenity that's maybe not seeing a ton of use, you're going to have wear and tear. If it's a very, very popular amenity, the use, I think, just goes exponential, so I can't predict if it's going to be really popular or if it's going to be more localized use by neighbors in any of these sites, if we were to add existing amenities, I don't know if people would travel to go to a one acre dog park.
And so currently, I know that you mentioned there'll be an opportunity to reach out to constituents if it moves forward. So that's, we're not there yet, is that, is that right, or?
I mean, I think next steps would be reaching out to the school district, Durango School District and the high school particularly as they're our closest neighbors. And then I think from that conversation, it would roll down through engaging the neighbors and seeing if there's support or eminent non-support.
Well, I think everybody wants a dog park, just not in their neighborhood.
Well, and that's why I think Rank Park is kind of a unique situation, you know, there's not a lot of use on that high school field, it's seasonal. The creek separates the neighbors, so that's some natural noise when it's running. So there might be some opportunity, also activating that park, we see quite a bit of vandalism in Rank Park. Activating that park might benefit the community in a different way.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Of course.
Best pictures of all presentations, by the way, yeah.
Isn't that?
I think Bryce stole one of the pictures too in this presentation.
Thank you, any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Pro Tim Mayor and Council, my name is Bryce Current and I'm the Chief of Police here in Durango. This is a request, presentation on citations, so I could definitely use some dog pictures. Thank you for the opportunity to do this. This presentation falls within strategic plan goals of safety, quality of life, engaged and informed community and community connectivity. So the purpose of the presentation is our shared is our shared vision to provide an overview of citation data for the past five years to share the department's philosophy on enforcement and to support the council and communities' understanding of enforcement strategies. So our vision is one Durango, so the purpose of writing tickets or warnings isn't to punish, but is to prompt safer choices moving forward while upholding the community's values through measured, respectful and thoughtful enforcement. This practice embodies our vision of unity, safety and service when guided by principles of balance and accountability and compassion. The customer service slogan you see on the side of our cars is protect, serve and care. So we protect by lawful enforcement with the goal of preventing, preventing is a big word in our our mission, dangerous behaviors. We serve by issuing warnings, citations and arrests, providing both accountability and education. We demonstrate care by enforcing with empathy, building trust and keeping safety, not punishment as the ultimate goal. So our philosophy, when I heard the mayor say that she had heard a little bit of our philosophy previously, public safety over quotas, ticketing should serve the larger goal of safety and not be driven by numbers or revenue. Should keep in mind, it is not ethical and may not be legal to have quotas. So the priority of enforcement, using data to address conduct that presents real danger, not actions that appeasing emotions. We work to avoid community perception of ticket traps also, where there's minimal problems, but it's easy to get the numbers. We enforce to protect, not punish. Every citation should reflect a risk worth addressing and an articulable reason why the action and this or the citation or the warning or the arrest will actually create a deterrent. So our philosophy, officers may use warnings, particularly for minor first time offenses to educate, many of our ordinances are designed around that, for example, the sit and lie ordinance or the state law for photo traffic enforcement, warnings are actually required by state law or by ordinance. Our policy states that warnings should be considered in minor traffic infractions and substitute for arrests or citations when circumstances warrant. Sometimes the best enforcement is a respectful conversation, I think we could all agree. A seasoned officer once told me every citation impacts an entire family, a reminder I kept in mind before issuing any fine. Regrettably, as a young officer, I wasn't immune to the ticket quota culture. And I know I caused hardship for people and their families when warnings would have sufficed. But when you have people knowingly and blatantly breaking the law, like we're seeing with a lot of teenagers with their throttle e-bikes ripping through town, obviously a ticket is probably the best answer and maybe even seizing their bike and having a conversation with their parents. So these are the citations by year, we're currently averaging about 3,000 citations per year with over 40,000 calls for service. It's a lot of calls for service for a city our size. We've seen a steady rise in citations since 2020 because of the intentionality of our two-person traffic unit, which sometimes can vary because of FMLA, if they're pulled back to patrol or injuries or if we're short-staffed. There's an anomaly, as you can kind of see in 2020, where the where we had COVID low contact numbers and we had to coach the new employees out of that culture of limited contact. And you could see the steady rise back to over 3,000 citations per year. So this is a citation breakdown by court. We've averaged 62% municipal citations over that five-year span and 38% are county citations. and 38% are county citations. So warnings, we had a high number of written warnings in 2020 and I'm just kind of gonna go over the anomalies here. With one traffic officer writing 466 warrant, warnings. Uh, the high, um, the high number of written warnings in '24 was two traffic officers writing 632 because of a distracted driving grant. But other than that, the numbers are fairly consistent, close to about 6,000 warnings per year. So between 20 and 25, officers have issued warnings more than twice as often as citations. Uh, 31,393 warnings compared to 15,508 citations or a 67% warning rate. So keep in mind, many of these are illegal camping, sit and lie in the CBD, which require us to give a warning first. Reflecting strategic emphasis also on education, voluntary compliance and professional discretion over punitive action. So these are the top offenses for citations. The so speeding is the number one issue that we see over 2,000 tickets since 2020, then theft, then DUI and so on. And an interesting one there is the violation of protection orders, which is sixth on the list, which tells you how important the officers are in protecting the vulnerable in our community. So the dog at large, I just, um, in the request, I could sense a little bit of this was also in the request, but the leash violations. So the city contracts with animal protection for animal at large enforcement and their numbers so far are as follows. So animal control calls in the city, they've had 905 so far this year, impounded animals, 83. Citations for dog at large, 11. Um, over 200 calls per month and Durango has written four dog at large or do, um, dog at large tickets this year. So even though we contract with animal protection, we've stepped our, up our enforcement um, with off-leash dogs, bicyclists, reckless behavior on the art and throughout the city. So open space rangers are dedicated to weekly patrols, issuing warnings and tickets and staff have even hit the trails on the e-bikes to gain a better understanding of what that patrol actually looks like here recently, um, before we change some things that I'm about to talk about. So compliance has been higher than is expected on the art, uh, but we also have offenders on the fast type, type three bikes coming on and off the trail in and throughout the city. Um, and we have a lot of these individuals running from us and uh, it's probably not the best decision, as you've seen in some of the emails this week, to chase a 13-year-old through a track to a busy town. But, but we have other ways and I'll talk about that in a minute. So animal protection has shifted mostly from uh, warnings to active enforcement in relation to off-leash pets, which is nice. Most notable police service technician into a full-time open space ranger bike position uh, to keep the, the art um, covered year-round. And we did that without requesting a new position. We did that internally. Um, he's completing training in about two weeks. So I want to talk a little bit about public pressure, how it shouldn't be the deciding factor for the officers. Generally, on most calls for service, our officers either do too much or not enough every single time. Generally, on most calls for service, our officers, um, when they're uh, when they're criticized, their job's to find the balance. After our last study session, an officer cited an elderly uh, woman who was walking alongside her slower elderly dog. And I won't comment whether the citation was warranted. Uh, but what I will stress is the officers should not allow public opinion or outside pressure to influence uh, their individual enforcement decision-making. Each contact is different and requires the discretion of each individual officer. Every time an officer decides to take an enforcement action, including a warning citation, they weigh out several factors. They weigh out our strategic plan, our policy, our mission, our vision, our core values, our customer service statement, our oath of office, our community values, public interest, oath of office, trust-building campaign oath, the severity of the violation, the intent and the behavior of the citizen, prior warning history, location, aggravating factors, equity, consistency and a goal for public safety and deterrence in each specific situation. Add the Colorado Constitution and the Constitution of the United States and furthermore, add the Colorado Post ALEA Colorado Enhanced Law Enforcement Integrity Act, where individual officers are now liable for civilly, where each contact has the potential to escalate into a use of force situation. And we've all seen these use of force situations around the country that started with a municipal ticket in the past five years. Officers make daily decisions to deter crime and de-escalate situations than they must do so independently of me or my staff. We set the culture, we set the expectations. They individually exercise that discretion and enforcement to achieve that goal, realizing that each individual contact in this community um, ends with a breach of trust or more trust with those individuals. We recall the Eric Garner case in New York. What began as a citation for selling cigarettes without a permit ended in a deadly tragedy and the public focuses on the ticket itself, the municipal ticket, rather than the aftermath or the resisting arrest. Likewise, in Durango, during the mask debate downtown after George Floyd, many wanted us to enforce the mask mandate. At the same time, police authority was being questioned around the country. And Chief Bramer emphasized balance, authority, common sense and common sense prevailed. So enforcement plus empathy equals balance. What is our philosophy? Is to create a safe place to live, work and play, safety from the criminals and safety from the police. Empathy without boundaries invites chaos and enforcement without restraint invites tyranny. Justice isn't measured by volume, um, but by fairness and wisdom. So with discretion and training, supervisors are directed to coach for results, not to dictate quotas to the individual officers. So each um, each professional expectation, um, each ticket should reflect a public safety risk. It should be fair and the officer must be able to articulate the goal to deter future behavior. Build naughty road, community trust, consistency builds trust and invites equity. So I learned a long time ago, uh, pulling over vehicles, that if you feel like you're writing a ticket and you feel stupid inside, it probably is. Uh, for instance, pulling a vehicle over for a license plate light, um, you know, that might, might, it might be good to give a warning in that situation. If you pull a vehicle over in an area for speeding and it's not congested and there's no history of crashes, that may be another place where we could, we could give a warning. So the call to action, so we do have areas in the city that require additional enforcement and the art is definitely one of them and also all over town on our streets. We now have a full-time open space ranger who will patrol on a bicycle. Uh, and a one person can cover a lot of ground, uh, when we went out and rode uh, for a full day. He will also be trained on discretion, empathy, enforcement, consistency and his indeterrence will be the goal. So these are the top tickets by individuals since 2020. So you can see the top number of tickets is 202 uh, in the last five years and then 136 by another one individual and then 91 by one individual and then so on. And then you see a lot of individuals with 20 and 30 tickets. So we need to acknowledge another reality with tickets. We can write the ticket and we can write them all day, but then what? Enforcement's only the front porch of the justice system. True, the, the, the true house rests on the pillars of the courts, legislation and prosecution. A ticket opens the door, but justice uh, lives much deeper inside of the house. So in, in slide eight, it showed failure to appear ranked third on the citations. And this is another thing that, that the courts are faced with. So there were over 500 failure to appears in um, since 2020. And in most places, that brings a warrant. But the counties limited the use of our jail for municipal warrants for one. And this year, the legislature also limited the ability, the court's ability to issue warrants for failure to appear. But thank goodness, the court does have a few other tools left. Um, and so the porch is still there, but parts of the house have been taken away. So we like to enforce what's called the Goldilocks principle to policing. So regardless of the political swing and frustration, policing should never swing wildly with public pressure, whether to pull back after tragedies like George Floyd or to crack down in response to rising crime trends. Authentic leadership means resisting emotional extremes and enforcing the Goldilocks principle, not too hot, not too cold, but just right. Realizing justice is, is built on a frustrating um, environment in a free society. You learn that early as a cop. And, and it's also built to side with the rights of the people. So what's the goal? Balanced, fair and steady is the goal. So we must practice values-based policing. So first, we need to know what the values of the community are. And once we know those values, then we need to be able to police those values. And I believe the principles that I've talked about so far today in this uh, presentation align with the values of the community members of Durango. So lastly, smart enforcement in a free society. Let's talk about the River Trail. We're reclassifying the full-time enforcement position um, as a proactive approach. It's a practical step that could be a game changer. I asked the community to give us a chance, um, because after a full day on the trail, like I said, you just see how much ground you can cover. So our new camera trailer also, and we, and as you've seen in the emails, we have somebody getting out of training in a couple of weeks to take that position. Our new camera trailer helps us identify teens and other um, illegal bikes who flee from us, allowing us to issue tickets at their homes. And my team's working on five of those right now. Um, here's the truth. We didn't win the war on drugs. We won't win the war on crime. Crime isn't defeated, it's managed. In a free society, the test is managing without giving up liberties that define us. Our mission is smart deterrence, fewer violations, a safer city and freedoms intact. So if you see a dog off a leash without an officer nearby, that's not a failure, it's just a reality. No system can catch every infraction. In a free society, enforcement must be thoughtful, prioritized, recognizing the limited resources and the shared responsibility of the community. And that's what it means to live as one Durango. And I'm gonna turn it, the presentation over to Myra and then we'll both be available for questions.
Thank you, Chief Kern. Okay. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Councillors, I don't have puppy pictures, but I have a short video for you. That was courtesy of Mark Morgan over there. So to speak on uh, from the perspective of city prosecutor and from the court, first, I just want to talk about some legal dispositions when we get citations and criminal violations that come to municipal court. There are various outcomes of a case, so I just want to walk through those because it's a little complicated, but I'll give you a brief overview. So the most common uh, plea agreement that we offer are called deferred judgments and sentencing. It's essentially when somebody enters a guilty plea, but it's on a deferred sentence. So if they fulfill certain conditions that we give them, uh, then if they succeed in fulfilling those conditions, then their case will be dismissed. It's used mostly for traffic violations. It's a way to avoid giving points, getting points on a license. So that's a really common um, offer. Deferred prosecutions are very similar, although it's just a contract between the city prosecutor and the defendant. The court is not involved in any way. Similarly, there are conditions um, and a probationary period. This is often used for minors uh, to avoid having permanent records as long as they fulfill conditions. And I'll speak later on the diversion program that is most commonly used for deferred prosecutions. A guilty plea is often the defendant's choice or for a lot of criminal violations where we cannot offer deferred judgments or deferred prosecutions, we'll have people plead guilty um, on certain offenses. It's our philosophy that they have to plead guilty on at least half of the violations we, like Bryce had showed you guys. We have a lot of repeat offenders that will come in with multiple citations at once. So having them plead to a certain amount and dismissing the others. And then not guilty plea, we don't get this very often, but then we set the matter for trial. We've had two trials this year since I've been here. So not a very common um, legal disposition. So I'm not sure if any of you are aware, but we've shifted our paper filing system this year to a fully online system called Quicket. Which was fully implemented just a few months ago this summer. As part of that process, the court and city prosecutor's office has ta, have taken this opportunity to purge sale cases. So you'll see reflected in some of the numbers of dismissed cases. That's merely just cases that had been left in this abyss that we have just moved and um, on the record dismissed, so we can get rid of them and clear them. And we're caught, we're up to date now. So the numbers moving forward should no longer have this um, discrepancy. So like I mentioned, we do have some diversion program options here. First, I'll very briefly talk about La Plata Youth Services, which we partner with them. They come in on uh, juvenile court days. They accept most juveniles. They're more familiar with a lot of these stu, people because they're students as well and they work with the schools. It's again, a way to keep juveniles' records clean. They will get a, a youth advocate from La Plata Youth Services who will help them come up with a case management plan. If they fulfill the task, it's typically three to six months, depending on what the charge was, um, then the case will be dismissed. Similarly, we have a program that just started last year called Problem Solving Court here at the municipal court. It's a, another voluntary diversion program for community members often experiencing barriers related to substance dependency, mental health barriers and being unhoused. It's a holistic approach to case management. The participants come and meet here the last Friday of every month. We sit at a table with community partners. We have the city prosecution's office. We have public defenders. We have uh, police from the core team. Um, and a variety of different uh, community partners, including Axis, some housing partners, Mano Soup Kitchen. We all sit together and discuss a holistic approach to each individual that's in the program and what resources they need. We hear from them and the barriers they're specifically facing. We currently have 13 participants in this program and the first graduation took place last Friday, which was really great. Uh, this participant no longer needed our services, had found housing and just completely flipped around from where she was in life. And it was just great to see that this program really has made a huge difference in certain people's lives who choose to engage. If people don't engage, they'll be dismissed from the program, which doesn't mean they can't be reinstated down the line. Um, but it is voluntary, so we do need to see active engagement. Here are some numbers. Um, again, they're not the greatest as they reflect some of those uh, cases that had just been sitting stagnant. Um, the next two slides will better clear this up. So this is for 2025 year-to-date. These are, on the left, you'll see um, the percentages of cases that we get, how many were found guilty, not guilty. Deferred pending are people who have entered deferred judgments or deferred prosecutions. However, they have not completed their conditions, which always either have a 90-day or 120-day probationary period. So no matter what, they will not, even if they fulfill other conditions, they won't be dismissed until that probationary period ends. And then the deferreds complete can include some rollovers from the previous year because there is that three to four, four-month probationary period. And then the total dismissed cases. And then on the right, that's broken down into how many of those are traffic violations versus criminal violations. In parentheses, you'll see the actual numbers. And then, yeah, like I mentioned before, deferreds, deferred judgments are often used for traffic violations. Uh, they are also a good tool for criminal violations though, because it is a way for us to keep track of defendants. It's a deterrent to stay out of trouble for that probationary period because the city prosecutor does have the option to revoke that. If conditions aren't fulfilled, one of those being getting another ticket uh, within that probationary period, we can then revoke it and we already have a guilty plea which can be entered against the defendant. That is all. Do you guys have any questions? I'm sure I spoke really quickly, so.
So Kip, you got your hand up first?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Really appreciate the overview, both the philosophical grounding as well as kind of some of the functional grounding as well. So um, I, I do believe that we've got a, a difference in um, intensity here in regards to off-leash dogs versus domestic abuse. I mean, we just I mean, we just have a, a different response that, um, for me at least, we, we need to talk about in regards to, to more minor infractions that are quality of life issues around, you know, off-leash dogs and speeding cycles on the ART, et cetera, et cetera. So I've got a couple of questions on the lower intensity stuff for you. Um, I, I was unaware of what the individual citation costs typically are. If, if we do have an off-leash dog and a citation is issued, what kind of costs are people looking at at that?
Um, yeah, so the, when somebody receives an off-leash, off-leash dog running at large ticket, the citation from animal control will typically be $40 ticket with a $16 surcharge. If they choose to come to court, um, we all, if we offer them a deferred or various other, there are various other court fees associated with that. So it'll be anywhere between $56 to like $100 for a violation.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, um, is there an escalation if I, if I'm a, a repeat violator on some of these lower level, lower intensity crimes? Is there a three strikes, you're out? Is there any kind of escalation for doing two, three, five tickets?
No.
Okay.
No, they all typically come with the same price. However, on the prosecution side of things, like I said, actually, I don't even think I said this. We will not offer deferred judgments or deferred prosecutions to folks who have another violation within the past 18 months.
Okay.
So that is, it's not that it will cost more, but it will be on your record for speeding or any traffic infractions. That means you will receive the points. So there are certain deterrence. It's not necessarily a monetary deterrent, but.
The judge has discretion on that too. There's always a sentencing and a finding range. So the judge could take someone you've seen who keeps doing the same thing, and he can escalate that fine from the $50 she was talking about all the way up. What's the maximum fine? $2,000?
I think now it's 500 for infractions, and then criminal is up to 2,000 something.
So the judge has discretion to escalate that. To do the, the enhanced penalty like you're talking about, that would take state law changes.
State law changes.
You can enhance, um, penalties like being a repeat offender on misdemeanors.
Beyond past what the state already has. Okay, that's a, a great point. And then, um, let's just talk a little bit about the, the ability for a, a sharp fine, a first fine to generate, um, the word of mouth. Um, you know, I, I, I've seen this in some of the parks, uh, Park Elementary in particular, used to be a dog haven in the morning and in the afternoons. Tickets got issued, tickets were substantial and, and solved that problem pretty quickly. Can you talk just a little bit about what are the hurdles of implementing something that's 100, $150 ticket for an off-leash dog? Potentially ridiculous, but I, I just want to talk about this point. And what that might mean in regards to, to decreasing our, our, our enforcement requirements down the line? That make sense?
Doesn't. I think what you're asking is, is, it's more on the prosecution side, because all they can do is just do the citation.
Right, okay.
Once this is, once the citation hits my office and it goes to court, then it's up to judicial discretion. And I know we're just having a discussion at a study session, but there are cases where there are city councils who have tried to mandate increased penalties and usurp judicial authority or prosecutorial authority, and that can get you into some kind of warm water. Um, certainly, we're sensitive to that, and I'm appointed and the judge is appointed. And, and if we get the feeling or there's, there's something in the community, that the community through a certain, if you want increased fines or something like that, that's something that we would be sensitive to and the judge would be sensitive to.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'll take a pause here, Mayor, if somebody else wants to go.
Thank you. Um, so thank you. This was really helpful for me to understand how your, your program works. Um, do you use body cams?
What's that?
Do you use body cams?
Yes.
You do? So, and every interaction is recorded?
Yes.
Okay.
Even the mind. If you walk in downtown and you just tell somebody hi, um, it's probably not on. But if you detain someone or take an enforcement action or tell somebody to do something, then it's, it's generally on.
So even the issue related to dog enforcement, as soon as the officer approaches another person, he or she turns on their camera?
Yes.
Okay. How about if they have to go into somebody's house?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so, um, I'm sorry, did you?
There was a lot of discussion behind that in the past with the ACLU and everyone else. And, um, I mean, it was kind of absurd, you know, asking permission before you're letting people know that you're recording all sorts of things. But no, it's required of officers now to have the recording on during all those contacts, which could be inside someone's house in a, in a store, private property, um, et cetera.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and so I guess, I, I think this was very helpful. Can, can you just go back to the slide regarding warnings, verbal warnings? Um, because there was one that said verbal warnings and then one that said written warnings. But, but even the written, I mean, even the verbal warnings are recorded. Um, and so I guess I just, my sense is that, um, or maybe I just ask.
For the one-third, the, the 64% chance of getting a, a warning, that slide?
Uh, it, it said like verbal warnings and then written warnings and then citations.
Oh, there we go. Yeah.
Okay, and so what, what, how might that interaction look like? Or, I mean, I know it's up to the discretion of the officer, as you mentioned, but like, how, what is the training for when, um, an officer decides to issue a written warning versus a verbal warning?
Well, they attend a police academy, and then they have a field training, um, you know, that several months long. And then they're eventually released out on their own. And then they still have guidance of sergeants and commanders, and the training, I mean, is endless. Uh, we have biannual training, every, you know, um, we have training that is required by the state that they continue to, to have. And then there's just super basic supervision and training and coaching.
Because, yeah, you know, obviously it's a very big discrepancy between a verbal warning and a written warning, just in terms of the numbers. Um, but I guess I just sort of curious as to what might then encourage them to go forward with a written warning?
With a written warning from a verbal warning?
Yeah, I'm, or yeah, what, like, what might make that distinction for the officer?
It's, just like I said, my presentation, it's what works. It's what we think is going to be a deterrent. Um, you know, I've, I've had people training me early on that said, you know what, you need to wake up and, and get in your car and decide that, you know, this many people are getting tickets, this many people are getting, um, warnings and this many. And I, I've never subscribed to that, and that's not our culture here. We should look at each individual incident and that discussion. That was a myriad of things that I read, um, you know, that their oath of office, that, you know, were they involved in previous incidents? A lot of the same things that the court's looking at when they're talking to somebody. And, and it really comes down to, is this going to deter this? Is this going to prevent this crime or this, you know, safety issue from occurring again? And I think if you can answer that in a discussion with somebody in a verbal warning, and you sincerely think that it's going to stop that action from occurring again, then that's what you should use according to our policy and our procedures and, um, and our, our culture. Um, if, you know, we definitely shouldn't write that ticket to punish. Uh, that's not our job to punish, it's the courts. Um, it's our job to, to, to set up the, the, the meeting with the courts if we feel like it's not going to be a deterrent. And so it's our job to every, each and every interaction, and each one is different, to, to measure that. That's why we, as staff, we just have to, uh, provide the commander's intent, so to speak, what the result needs to be in each specific area, and the officers decide how to get to that result. And we continue to coach.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. This is helpful. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I, 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 I guess I'm going to open this up because I'm not sure how we can progress forward on improving the situation for off-leash dogs. There's been a cascade of comments from individual citizens who have had biting incidents on the trails. Um, I've gotten bit three times now up in Horse Gulch over the course of the last 10, 15 years. I, I just don't know where to go with this. So I, I guess I'm opening it up to council or city manager, city attorney. If we want to increase enforcement, if we want to make this, uh, a more, a more visible, uh, enforcement action, what are our opportunities as a council at this point?
I think what you look for from at least the staff standpoint, what we do have is a new position that's now going to be fully on the Animus River Trail that has just started. So that is the one step in regards to what are we doing from an administration point to address this? We've reclassified a position. We are now having a position that's dedicated full-time to trail, uh, enforcement. So which would include the off-leash side. That's going to need to take time to see what that position does, I think. Chief put a really good point into that presentation that doesn't happen overnight. We need to see what that does. It's something we haven't done. So from an administration side, that's what we're doing. From the other side of the, the portion of it, I think that's more on, on Mark's side of, once the ticket's written, if it is written, how does that go about? Um, that's all with the judge, uh, mostly determines the penalty fine on that side of it. Outside of that, if there's a concerted effort to which the council doesn't believe that one person is going to be enough, and there's a discussion or a call to have more positions going through that, that's something you can direct us to look into, and we can talk to where that funding would come from. Seeing this is a general fund type proportion, it would mean at this point that it's going to come from some other department or some other area within the general fund to provide for that service.
So, and, and even though we contract that service out generally, we saw the need. And so we're trying to take more control, and we took an actual police service technician that handles crashes, um, minor, uh, thefts, gathers video evidence. So we took a very crucial position from patrol because we see that need. And when we rode the trail, we saw the same people five and six times. And so we just got to, and we're going to put the camera trailer out there, um, also to get times when we're seeing the, the bikes are a big problem too. You know, and we've got to clamp down on that. And, and, and we have different ways to achieve that too, where we don't have to chase people. Um, we can still show up at their door and knock on their door and give them their citation. So, um, we really think, like, like the city manager said, that this is going to make a huge difference, and we're going to track it. We're going to monitor it. It's part of our strategic plan. We're going to measure it, and we're going to report on it and just see how we do. Um,
Chief, if you could share out the metrics that might be, that, that might be of, of help, if you could just email the council at some point on what metrics would specifically kind of apply towards these, I think that would be a, a benefit for.
And I'm, I'm, we're definitely going to do that, and we're running into some problems right now. You notice I come with metrics on everything all the time, right? But we don't have specifics for the bikes right now, and we're looking at some AI software to be able to pull that out of our systems right now. Um, and, uh, some other ways that we can get, but we are going to have those metrics because we need them for our strategic plan to see what's working, what's not working, where we put the most efficient sources in. But I think this is going to be huge. We just got to get, um, them out there. Uh, they're out there training and they're doing it right now, but we need them at the different times where we have the real problems.
Okay, and I'd love to recircle around on, um, staffing at a certain point too. It sounds like we're focused on the ART, but we've got a lot of trails, uh, within the city that we've got, you know, we need patrols on. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
All righty, thank you for, um, that report. It was real revealing, but one issue, I'm going to make this one comment, then we're going to, um, end this, um, study session, but, you know, we still need the cooperation of the dog owners to obey the, the rules. And, um, unless we get the community here really communicates to the dog owners that, um, it's against the law to be off the leash. And even if we do a dog park, they're going to complain that, you know, it's not shaded, you know? So I, I have my doubts at, um, how far we can go with controlling people's behaviors. But anyway, so thank you for everybody's input. So we're adjourned.
Thank you.